Time is now 5:30 PM. On Tuesday, May 13th. Calling to order the regular meeting of the Warwick School Committee for the month of May. At this time, I would ask Ms. Tedeschi to please do a roll call. Here.
Ms. Hazelwood? Mr. Wiggins? Mr. Testa? Thank you.
Ms. Kirby Chapman? For present, we have a quorum. At this time, I ask everyone willing and able to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. So, this is one of the best parts of the meeting. As always, each month, we recognize our employees and incredible students and student athletes and individuals within the arts. And tonight, we have a very full agenda of individuals being recognized for their achievements as employees and as students. So at this time, I turn it over from Ms. Ruggieri to kick us off with our employee spotlight.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the school committee. I echo what Chair Gallagher just said. We have a lot of students to recognize for their outstanding work tonight, but I also want to make sure that our staff gets the recognition as well. We've had a lot of good things going on, and we love to recognize them each and every month. So first off, if anyone's here, please stand so we can recognize you. First off, in the clerical category, we have Julie Donovan at the Career Center. In the maintenance department, Kyle Fritchie. As an instructional integrationist at Oakland Beach, Nicole Monte. Our principal at Welk, Lisa Dempsey. Teacher assistant at Winman, Deborah Smith. A world language teacher at Pilgrim, Carolyn Lawrence. Special educator at Hoxie Elementary, Carly Evans. And our executive assistant to the superintendent, Teresa Tedeschi. Congratulations to everyone, and please keep the nominations coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruggieri, and congratulations to all of our employees spotlighted in the month of April, even Ms. Tedeschi. This is incredible, when this agenda was being put together to see the volume of students being put before us this evening for recognition. It just shows you all of the great things that are going on within our, within our school district, both within the classroom and out, you know, whether it's in the auditoriums and their band and chorus, or out on the fields, or, or in this particular case with our first individual out on the track. So, I would suggest to my colleagues and interim superintendent, Mr. McCaffrey, if you guys want to join me down in the front. Our first presenter is Mr. Ricks, presenting Keeney Behe with recognition this evening.
It's not too often that we're able to, we're able to recognize someone with such accomplishments as Keeney has accomplished in the last couple, her last four years in high school. And I would just want to talk about a couple of those things. She's a high academic student with a 4.63 GPA. She's on the academic decathlon teams. She's been the class president for four years. She belongs to the debate club. She's a student council at Pilgrim for four years. She has taken multiple AEP and college classes, AP and college classes. And this year, she was named Gatorade Player of the Year for cross-country. She was also named Rhode Island Female Athlete of the Year. And she was awarded the RI AAA Athletic Directors Association Award for Top Female Athlete. So her accomplishments continue to climb. It's just really amazing. She's very modest. She just ran, came over here from running track, and she doesn't look for a lot of credit. She just does her thing. But what she's done is amazing. She, in addition to keeping up the high academic standards that she has, and being one of the top students in the class, she played seven sports. Nobody, in one year. Not seven sports in four years. Nobody does that. And that included two stents with the unified basketball and volleyball teams. She makes the times for it. She did swimming, she did field hockey, and cross-country, and both track teams. So tonight, the Warwick School Committee and Warwick Administration would like to honor Keeney Behe for her accomplishments.
This next presenter needs no introduction, but I'll do it anyways. Out of the Warwick Area Career and Technical Center, Principal Timothy Kane.
He was my student. All right, we're here tonight to recognize some outstanding students. They're really just a great group of kids that excel at the highest levels at not only the Career Center, but in a lot of the state competitions, some of which will be going to Atlanta, Georgia, in just a short period of time. For those of you who don't know, being a Skills USA Medalist is the ultimate recognition of excellence in career and technical education. The event brings together thousands of students, instructors, business partners, and administrators to celebrate the accomplishments of those preparing for careers in trade, technical, and skilled services. It's an incredible opportunity for students to showcase their talents and skills on the state and national level. Students gain valuable industry experience, learn about new technologies and advancements in the field, and develop their leadership abilities. This year, the Warwick Area Career and Technical Center earned 36 medals, 14 of which are gold and will be competing in Atlanta, Georgia, June 22nd through the 28th. We are here tonight to recognize these outstanding students. I'm going to ask students, when we call your name, and I'll preface this by, career and technical education, the downfall of the night is most are upperclassmen, and they work, because they believe in careers. So, we will name everybody, because we want to recognize everybody here. First candidate tonight will be Ava Cosetti. Silver medal. Congratulations, Ava. Do you want to do a group up here? We'll have you guys go up.
Yeah, whatever you want to do, sir.
Thank you, sir. Second will be Daniel Lynn. He's being recognized for silver medalist in electronics technology. Guys, always sit in the back. Next student, Callie Hidalgo Stafford, gold medalist, state pin design winner. Next medalist, Enya De Reyes, bronze medalist, t-shirt design. We have Connor Jackson, he's being recognized, gold medalist in technical drafting. Connor, this is your second time to Nationals. Great work. Great work. Silver medalist, technical drafting, Andrew Flints. Benjamin Duran, gold medalist, engineering and design technology. Jasmine Bedrow, gold medalist, engineering, design, and technology. Alexis Fitzgerald, gold medalist, engineering, design, and technology. Noah Durand, gold medalist, internet working. Jack Wilson, silver medalist, internet working. Francis Crone, and silver medalist, marine service technology. Joshua Quimby, bronze medalist in welding. Taran McGregor, gold medalist, welding sculpture. Jaden Brown, gold medalist, cosmetology. Sophia Peckham, silver medalist, cosmetology. Victoria Zissoussin, silver medalist, aesthetics. Jada Rice, silver medalist, aesthetics. Sadie Scotty, silver medalist, basic healthcare skills. Azirea Town, silver medalist, entrepreneurship. Dylan Garcia Lopez, silver medalist, entrepreneurship. Jonah Johnson, silver medalist, entrepreneurship. Gavin Rossi, silver medalist, entrepreneurship. Kason Wertz, gold medalist, teamwork. Robert Holland, gold medalist, teamwork. Kale Shanley, gold medalist, teamwork. David Bayesian, gold medalist, teamwork. Dominic Whelan, bronze medalist, automotive service technology. Isabel Menard, silver medalist, baking, bakery, baking and pastry art, sorry. Anthony Morales, silver medalist, culinary arts. John Giuffreda, silver medalist, restaurant service. Brendan Mahalan, bronze medalist, industrial motor controls. Joseph McCormick, bronze medalist, job skills demonstration A. Mizael Johnson, gold medalist, biotechnology. Grace Ferland, gold medalist, biotechnology. And last but not least, John Ritchie, who is Rhode Island State Officer.
While our students retreat and my colleagues get back to the stage, I'll just say on behalf of the school committee how incredibly proud we are of all of those who were just recognized by Mr. Kane. The Warwick Area Career and Technical Center is a hidden gem. The state's putting an immense focus on career and technical education, and so to see this many students go on to the state level and now travel off to the national level, it's a, it's a, it's a great thing for our school district. So, on behalf of the school committee, again, congratulations to everybody that's been recognized At this time, I'd be looking for a motion to go into closed session for discussion and/or action regarding those items of business exempt from open meetings under general laws of Rhode Island, RIGL 42-46-5A1, A2, A4, and A8, and A9. Made by Mr. Testa. Seconded by Mr. Wiggins. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
Time is now 6:34 PM on Tuesday, May 13th. I'm calling back to order the regular meeting of the Warwick School Committee. I'm looking for a motion to seal the minutes of executive session. Made by Mr. Tester and Ms. Hazelwood and seconded by Mr. Wiggins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. There were no votes taken in executive session. Ms. Tedeschi, now that we're back in open session, would you please call the roll for open session?
Mr. Galligan?
Here.
Ms. Hazelwood?
Here.
Mr. Wiggins?
Here.
Mr. Tester?
Here.
Ms. Kirby Chapman? Not present. For present, we have a quorum. You can say her name. Gives us a good head count. At this time, we're moving on to public comment. Public comment is relative to agenda items only. Individual comments will be respectfully limited to three minutes per person with public comment not to exceed 45 minutes. Though the content of comments will not be restricted, it is the hope of this committee that citizens, committee members, and the administration alike will be respectful of each other's right to speak, tolerant of different points of view, and mindful of everyone's time. This public comment period is for agenda items only. A second public comment session is available later in the meeting for all of the --
Time is now 6:34 PM on Tuesday, May 13th. I'm calling back to order the regular meeting of the Warwick School Committee. I'm looking for a motion to seal the minutes of executive session made by Mr. Testa and Ms. Hazelwood and seconded by Mr. Wiggins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. There were no votes taken in executive session. Ms. Tedeschi, now that we're back in open session, and would you please call the roll for open session?
Mr. Galligan?
Here.
Ms. Hazelwood?
Here.
Mr. Wiggins?
Here.
Mr. Testa?
Here.
Thank you.
Ms. Kirby Chapman? Not present. For present, we have a quorum. You could say her name. Gives us a good head count. At this time, we're moving on to public comment. Public comment is relative to agenda items only. Individual comments will be respectfully limited to three minutes per person with public comment not to exceed 45 minutes. Though the content of comments will not be restricted, it is the hope of this committee that citizens, committee members, and the administration alike will be respectful of each other's right to speak, tolerant of different points of view, and mindful of everyone's time. This public comment period is for agenda items only. A second public comment session is available later in the meeting for all of their topics or concerns. Members of the public are permitted to speak during both of the public comment periods. Speakers are asked to state their name for the record. For those new to our meetings, the microphone is down here. Just please make sure that it's on. It's at the podium to my left, and you can go one after another person. So anybody wishing to speak? Any members of the public wishing to comment? Any individuals named Darlene Neko? Oh, come on down. Here we go.
Suppose they gave a public comment and nobody came.
I'm happy you're here. Go ahead.
All right. Darlene Neko, lifelong resident of Warwick, homeowner, taxpayer. Thirty-seven years in the classroom, president of the Warwick Teachers Union. First, I want to, and I only have a couple of minutes, but I just want to acknowledge the retirement of Lynn Danbrook. Forty years in this district. She was a teacher before she was anything else. She was a building rep for the Warwick Teachers Union during a very difficult time, back in the real times of the troubles of the 90s. And so I just thank you to Lynn and everything that she's done for the district over the years and for teachers. I know when she was a principal at Robertson, the teachers really appreciated her as principal at Robertson. So, you know, congratulations, and I wish her well, and we all wish her well in her retirement. And like I said, I only have a few minutes. And I also want to point out some other things. I see all of the updates about the high schools on the agenda. Once again, I want to see some action at Tollgate High School. The Tollgate faculty has spent a whole year parking behind the Career Center because allegedly work was going to be done. We're a little annoyed that we've had to walk up all those stairs every day, and if you think I'm exaggerating, you guys come and try it. It's not fun in the snow and the rain and everything else. So I can't wait to see drum rock actually being demolished and shovels going into the ground. And I know Pilgrim is going to start before Tollgate, but whenever those two events are to happen, I would like it well-publicized so we can all be at the groundbreaking. And one quick thing, if I have time, just a reminder, the City Council has their budget hearings beginning on Monday. We don't know exactly when the schools will be on. Previous mayor used to put the schools first or second, or at least give us a time. It seems the current setup is designed to make it inconvenient, but they begin at 4 o'clock, so, and which is also an inconvenient time for the public to go to a meeting. But I think everyone in the school community, if you can go, you need to turn out to support the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neko. I know it's not usual, but I'll respond to that public comment. I'm happy to say that tonight there will be an update from left field regarding the groundbreakings for both Pilgrim and Tollgate. And no, I do not want any additional cardio in trying to walk over in Tollgate's area. So, thank you for the recommendation.
Good evening. Mark Mainville, Director of Operations at Mentor Rhode Island. Just wanted really to echo with regard to Superintendent Danbrook. She's been a great partner with the mentoring program over the course of its history, really. You know, we've been doing the program for more than 30 years, and so it really aligned with her for much of that time, and she's been a great partner with it. So we wanted to publicly thank her for everything that she's done and are excited to continue working with the school committee and interim Superintendent McCaffrey, who knows the program well and we work well with as well. So just wanted to give that and see you all at the City Council Budget Meetings.
Thank you very much. We'll see you there. Are there any other members of the public wishing to comment? Any other members of the public wishing to comment? Jacob? No? Any other members of the public wishing to comment? Seeing none, we are on to recommended actions, routine matters. Looking for a motion to move approval of minutes of public session, April 8th, 2025, made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Looking for a motion to move approval of minutes of public session, April 17th, 2025, made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Looking for a motion to move approval of minutes of executive session, April 17th, 2025, made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Looking for a motion to move approval of minutes of executive session, April 17th, 2025, made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Looking for a motion to move approval of transfers, May 13th, 2025, made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Looking for a motion of approval of warrants, May 13th, 2025, made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 4-0. At this time, I'll turn it over for Ms., to Mr. Jerry for announcements personnel as presented.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair and members of the school committee. I come before you tonight with quite a long list. This is the time of year when we're getting a lot of teacher retirements, so we have a lot of years that are leaving us this June. So first off, we bid farewell for retirements to Patricia Cusino, Director of Elementary Education. She's been here for 36 years. Roger Hall, science teacher at Pilgrim High School with 18 years of service. Christopher Plant, science teacher at Tollgate High School with 35 years in Warwick and two years in the state for a total of 37 years. Linda McPhillips-Bush, special education teacher at Tollgate with 18 years of service. Linda Patrick, school nurse teacher at Welk with 33 years of service. Sandra Brown, music teacher at Wyman School with 24 years of service. Susan Fusco, elementary school, grade four at Sherman, 35 years of service. Lynn Seidenberg, elementary teacher at Sherman with 39 years of service. Karen Calabro at Sherman Elementary with 32 years of service. Teacher assistant, Mary Ann Del Judas at Tollgate High School with 18 years of service. And Antonetta Marley, senior clerk in the Technology Department with 21 years of service. So I do need a vote on that, please.
Looking for a motion to move approval of the retirements and resignations as presented, made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I wish everybody well. Thank you. Ms. Cusino, a long time, so, and everyone else, so thank you for your service.
Thank you.
So are you suggesting that we remove Ms. Cusino from this vote? I'm just trying to figure out, if we tell her no, does she effectively stay?
Haven't tried that yet. That's a new path.
Mr. McCaffrey, go ahead. Any other discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Mr. Jerry?
Thank you very much. We do have a few resignations. Because they're not taking their pension right away, they're considered resignations, but they're retiring, so I will mention their years of service as well because they are substantial. We have Heidi C. Enferani at Cedar Hill Elementary School with 31 years of service, and Danica Vanako, reading specialist at Hoxie with 21 years of service. And as Mr. Testa has liked to do for many years, this is a total of 402 years of service leaving us this year. And we also have two wise members who have resigned, a custodian at Horton, Patrick Del Santo, and a teacher assistant at Norwood, Stacy Scribner.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry. I'm looking for a motion to move approval of the retirements and resignations as just presented.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion? I just want to congratulate and thank everyone on their careers with Warwick Public Schools. Thank them for their years of service and everything that they've done, not only for the school district but for the community. So I wish you all very well and your happy retirement. And with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
We have a withdrawal as a resignation, excuse me, from Teresa Tedeschi. She will remain the school committee secretary, so we do need a vote on that as well.
Wasn't on this. Did anyone catch this? Looking for a motion to move approval on the withdrawal. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins and Ms. Hazelwood. Any discussion?
This is the make up your mind motion.
Yeah. Very tempted to vote no.
This is I'm-so-happy motion.
Vote no. So no discussion?
Lot of stress up here.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. She's re-employed.
And finally, we have three people to welcome to the district. We have one transfer, Michelle Devine, who will be moving back to Warwick Veterans Middle School as the principal. We welcome her to that role. We also welcome John Gonyea, the night custodian at Tollgate High School, and Rebecca Baldwin, a teacher assistant at Hoxie Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry, and welcome to our new employees. We're now on to donations and correspondences. The first donation is in the amount of $193 to Oakland Beach Elementary School to replace boards on the outdoor benches, so we want to thank the very kind individuals that donated $193 to Oakland Beach Elementary School so that they could replace the boards on their outdoor benches. The second donation that we have this evening is in the amount of $50 to Hoxie School from Lowe's Home Improvement for Mother's Day pots. So again, we want to thank, as a community and as a school district, Lowe's Home Improvement for their very kind and generous donation of $50 so that way we could get Mother's Day pots for the students there at Hoxie Elementary. And last but not least, a donation to Greenwood Elementary School from the Greenwood 5th Grade Parent Group for an outdoor soccer net with an approximate value of $300 to $500. So on behalf of the Warwick School Committee, we want to thank the Greenwood 5th Grade Parent Group for their very kind and generous donation of an outdoor soccer net for Greenwood Elementary School with an approximate value of $300 to $500. So thank you to everybody for all their kind contributions to our school district and our schools. Any comments from members of my committee on these three donations? Seeing none? Okay, we are now on to Part J of our meeting, adoptions of policies. I'm looking for a motion to move approval of the first read of policy, JGAA, Physical Intervention with Students. That's JGAA, Physical Intervention with Students, first read.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. I just had a question about, let me get two or three here. I just had one question. There are a lot of changes, and good ones, I'd say, but in Section J, I'm just wondering if this is applicable. See, it says, "We won't deny adequate sleep, food, water, shelter, bedding, or access to bathrooms." And I know that we have, you know, food, yes. Adequate sleep, I know we're supposed to let the kids in K and pre-K nap, they have a nap, but the bedding and such, is that something that we? Should we specify that this is for certain grades and not overall?
In pre-K and K, it's more of a rest period after like a lunch and recess type break. There isn't really, they can bring like a snuggly or stuffed animal with them, but it's not like a nursery or a daycare would have like a nap time. It's more of a quiet rest time. Some read a book, some listen to music, sometimes the teacher just kind of has a quieter environment for them, so I'm just trying to give you some little context around that. That's what it looks like.
So does this really, is this really something that should be in this policy?
So if I'm looking at the Rhode Island regulations, it's actually spelled out right there about what qualifies as, you know, intervention for, and what we cannot do and what we can do. So I think that was sort of the spirit of why we included it, so it kind of mimicked that.
I know that this would be included in group, group home settings, schooling in group home settings, certain settings like that, but I'm just, just wasn't really sure if it should be part of our, our school setting. Yeah, it is a first read.
To the point of Mr. Testa, Ms. Hazelwood, if you have some recommendations, if you'd want to offer them up to the policy subcommittee, and they take those under advisement in the next policy subcommittee meeting.
Thank you.
Did you have?
Not at this, I will get in touch with that for sure.
Would you like me to send you the regulations with the definitions included?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks. I had a child who was in a group home that came to me from a group home. And now he's my son. So I understand this policy. I just don't think it's fitting to our district.
Okay. Thank you.
All set, Ms. Hazelwood? Excellent. Mr. Testa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Murray, thank you that this policy is 15 years old and it reads that way. The word restraint is in here about 100 times. My question is either for you, possibly Mr. Hennessy, usually at the end of the policy, it talks about either laws that are cited or ride regulations. Is there nothing? Or?
I noticed that today, actually, that the former policy never had any regulations, but we do have the ride regulations, so that's something that we definitely should be adding.
When I saw that, I said, we couldn't have made this up on our own.
Yeah, I double-checked to make sure I didn't leave it out, but no.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
These are all, these are all specified on the restraint regulations, which are ancient, which I think probably leads to Ms. Hazelwood's questions and yours as well, but they are in the process of redoing them, but right now, these basically mirror the current restraint regulations.
All set, Mr. Testa? Any other discussions for members of the committee? I just want to thank Ms. Murray and Ms. Evans, who answered my questions earlier. I just wanted to verify that in the, in the policy, it states that we're, we're doing training within the first 30 days of a school year, or then within the first 30 days of somebody coming in upon employment. And so I appreciated Ms. Murray linking me up with Ms. Evans, and Ms. Evans confirming that that training is in fact happening. So I always believe in trust and verify. So thank you guys all very much. Seeing that there's no other discussions before this committee on this particular policy, all those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Next item we have before us for a second read, policy JFA, Student Grievance Policy. I'm looking for a motion to move approval.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion on this particular policy? Mr. Testa?
And again, it's a reference question. In this policy, there's nothing in this that has any references to what guided us to this policy. Because without the reference, I think you just assume it's all homegrown, right? So if whatever is there, can we just make sure we add that?
Yes. This came to us because of our accreditation procedures for the culinary, the culinary program, and they were cited in their accreditation or re-accreditation that they didn't have a student grievance policy. So Mr. Hennessy was kind enough to find some, but there wasn't actually one in a school district, so it was from a university, so I'll let him speak to that.
That's 100% accurate. There would be no legal citation to this particular policy.
Then that's fine. Thank you.
Any other discussion regarding policy JFA, Student Grievance? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries 4-0. We're now on to Part K of our meeting, New Business. First item on the agenda, discussion presentation, Warwick Public Schools Special Services Transition Program as presented by Ms. Samantha Davey. We have a couple presenters, it looks like, so if you guys just want to state your names for the record and for the general public, that'd be appreciated.
Hello. Hi, I'm Sammy Davey, and I do have somebody with me.
Bethany Hogan?
My emotional support parent for the evening. I'm going to come and give you cards for our program as well, so I know that it says the Special Services Transition Program. We have worked really hard this year to kind of rebrand what the transition program is and really have student voice in everything that we are doing. So we are now going to be called the Bridge Program, so it's Building Resources, Independence, Determination, Growth, and Empowerment. Um, so it's Building Resources, Independence, Determination, Growth, and Empowerment. Um, so what, what are we doing right now? Um, we are connecting with new job sites, working on job skills, increasing our independence at job sites. So it really is student-driven job exploration. Um, we are connecting with the community, and we are cooking and baking. So the next few slides, I just have our community connection, some things that we have done this year. So we have gone to the Avon Hawk branch of the library, um, we found the Rock Snake, um, we found a new one, um, at Rocky Point as well this week. Um, we do grocery store budgeting. Uh, we also do have fun, so we were doing a budgeting scavenger hunt. Um, and we get bonus points if we have the items and we take a picture with them. Um, and then we also volunteer to save the bay. We do nature hikes to be in the community, walking tour of Pawtucket Village. Um, and we've been doing some tree identifying in Warwick with Clouds Hill, which has been really fun. Uh, we done a, we did a walking, walking tour of Providence, um, and we did a tour of Providence City Hall. Um, we've worked with the Warwick Tourism, and then we also have gone to Red, White, and Brew. Uh, these are just some more. We went to Show Me Reptiles. It is closed now, but this was student job exploration. Um, the students really have gotten, um, I call us the adultier adults, because they are adults as well, um, gotten us, us out of our shell, uh, because this was terrifying for me, um, but they loved it, and it was a lot of fun. Uh, we've gone to Old Navy, uh, we did student job exploration. So we worked on what it means to be at the register, in the back room. Um, students really liked using the technology. And then I just have some other places that we have gone. This will probably be up on our website as well, um, that's part of the Warwick Public Schools. Um, and then just some great pictures of cooking, so students helped me pick out pictures that they wanted me to share. So we work on that a lot. Um, and our job sites, so we go to WELK. Um, we're at Joblot, that's right next to us. Uh, Hospitality, so right now we're at Tavern in the Square in Garden City. So if you have eaten there, um, the rollups are probably from our students. Uh, we go to Clouds Hill, which I have lived here my whole life, and I didn't know existed, um, until this year. And we do a lot of work with them. Um, we also go to Lead Back Fitness. And we have Walgreens, Coffee Grinder, Brentwood Nursing Home, the Administration Building, uh, Dave's Market, Cellos, and then we also have Entrepreneurship. So we have woodworking and, um, loom crafts. So if you have been in the admin building, you've probably seen my students selling, um, loom bracelets. I have a whole arm's worth that I didn't wear tonight. Um, and then we just shared a couple of things. Our students planned an entire birthday party for everybody that had a birthday in the fall. I ran out of tablecloth because I didn't think everyone was going to want to sit together, and this is right before I started crying because I thought it was wonderful, because like, we just have never been able to have everybody together, and it was really great and student-driven. Um, from budgeting to buying to preparing, the only thing that the adultier adults helped with was paying for the pizza. So everything else was, uh, was them. So we've been talking about a lot of our favorite things. Um, going to job sites, um, people in the program. We've been using Polaroids, because I have a student that was interested in photography, and I have a lot of extra Polaroids for my wedding. Um, so I kind of just gave it to them, and they've been working on their photography. Um, we like to go into the library. They wanted to put this really embarrassing picture of me, so I'm going to go fast. Um, so what's next? What else are we doing? So we're doing more small group job exploration. We do large group trips. Um, there's 20 students in the program, um, as of right now. Um, we're connecting with the adult agencies, so ORS and BHDDH. It's really student-driven, and then we have a new website that's connected to Warwick Public Schools. Um, and these are two pictures that students took of the staff, um, that are, are there. And then I'm just going to let, um, Bethany speak first, and then I'll answer any questions.
Good evening. Um, so I came to this committee in January, hot, out of the gate, with a lot to say. Um, the transition program at that time was weak, to say the very least. It was not meeting the needs of our students. It wasn't preparing them, um, for employment and community engagement after leaving the security of the Warwick Public Schools. Um, and it also wasn't complying with the priorities as laid out in the consent decree. Massive overhaul has taken place since then, as I stand here in front of you with a smile on my face, that's changed, for, for me, as we know. Most significantly, new leadership has prioritized the needs of our students and is working to address the unmet needs that we saw in the fall. In particular, Ms. Davey, Mr. Carter, and Ms. Costello over at Pilgrim have enacted changes to programming, community-based work experiences, and student support. Something as simple as changing the name of the program to the Bridge Program instead of referring to it as the 18 to 22 Program. It just changes the whole perception of, of what's going on, um, in that building. That's my reason why. Those two boys in the middle of this auditorium, current student in the trans, in the Bridge Program, sorry, and future student of the Bridge Program. So when I told you back in January I was going to be here for a while, I wasn't kidding. We're, we're in this for the long haul, everyone. Um, and my son, back there, he went from folding pizza boxes, as you heard, um, pizza boxes in a back room in grocery stores to doing his preferred activities. He's, um, working at Brentwood Nursing Home, he's working at WELK. And if you look at that dog that's up there, that's his woodworking project. He is making so much in his woodworking shop. And thanks to Ms. Davey, he has completed the Entrepreneurship Program as laid out by the DD Council, and he has started his own business at 19 years old. You can just shameless plug, Woodcrafts by Ryan on Facebook. You can go ahead and just follow us. So huge changes. We still have a lot to do. Um, thank you to Mr. Carter. He has started a advisory network for the Bridge Program that meets monthly for parents and students to come together with administration to hear the updates that Mr. Carter is kind enough to provide us with every month, and also to provide feedback on how things are going and what we'd like to see moving in the future. Um, students and parents are finally, finally being heard. And while we do have, um, a journey, uh, I feel like we're finally on the right path. And I just want to thank the members of this committee who did get back to me and who, who kind of felt some ownership in this. I, I appreciate your work. And again, Ms. Davey, Mr. Carter, and Ms. Costello, absolutely invaluable in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. So I... First and foremost, I want to say, when you came before us in January, it was gut-wrenching to hear what you had to say. But it's people like you who sparked change by going about it in a respectful manner, uh, showing your son and others the way to go about things. Uh, you know, not doing what people do these days, and that's taking to social media and bashing people. It's getting involved, speaking up, shedding some light on an issue. Uh, so personally, as a, as a father of children within this district, and as a brother-in-law of somebody who was once in that program at Pilgrim, I want to say thank you very much for opening our eyes up to what required some change. Uh, secondly, I, I also want to thank Ms. Davey and, and Mr. Carter and Ms. Costello, as well as Mr. McCaffrey, um, and, and Ms. Danbrook and, and everyone else, Ms. Barber and everyone else at the Administrative Building who had a hand in, in transforming this program. Um, obviously, it needed to be freshened up a little bit, revitalized and sparked in, uh, what you guys have done in a short period of time. Uh, you know, I, on January 22nd, when that meeting was going on, I was at the City Council Chambers for a very inviting meeting. And it was while I was there that that meeting was going on, and I knew you guys and all the individuals that I just mentioned were doing God's work and, and revitalizing that program. So between January 22nd and now, what has occurred is, is incredible. So to all of you, I, I just say thank you very much for, for your advocacy and for your hard work uh, over these past few, several months. And I'm looking forward to seeing what other woodworking creations come out, what we're going to get. Um, you know, maybe that's, it's a cheap way. I've got an anniversary coming up in a couple weeks, so uh, maybe you can help me out there, but, uh, thank you very much for everything you've done. So, um, I'll turn it over. Any other members of the committee looking to make a comment on, on this program? Mr. Wiggins?
It's my first meeting as a school committee member. Um, I remember it was, what I have just seen, what is, from that moment to where we are now, is truly a bridge, right? It's, it's a great name. Why, I love the name. Ed Nardello also should be recognized as well for helping out with the website and helping, you know, that just one name that I know is a part of this on top of everybody else. But, uh, I have an enormous amount of pride, uh, in what you guys have done and seeing these, what, what the kids, young adults have been able to do is, is awesome. And, and Ryan, yes, I'm going to need to, we're going to work on some baseball stuff, so we're going to talk at baseball practice. We'll take care of that. But you, you guys did awesome. I'm, don't want to repeat what the chairman said, but this is an incredible turnaround for this program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from members of the committee? Ms. Hazelwood?
I'm just always impressed when I see things flip like this. It shows that you, you got your hands dirty and you did hard work. These changes don't come without people, everybody getting involved and putting their best, best self forward. So I, I'm very grateful. I love to hear that the kids are getting, and they're not just kids, they're adults. There will always be kids to me, I'm sorry.
That's why we're adultier adults.
That's right, but, um... Them getting this is huge. You know, I had a son that went through the program, and I know what it means to their future to get what's needed at this level and beyond. So you're setting them off on the right foundation, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hazelwood. Great. Well, thank you guys very much for presenting tonight. Thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for your advocacy, and, and we look forward to continuing to see what the Bridge Program continues to do. Thank you very much.
Of course. Um, who do I give these to? These are all three of you.
Ms. Tedeschi, she's a new hire. She'll get them. The next item is Discussion Update, Warwick Special Education Advisory Committee. The chair of that committee unfortunately could not be here this evening. I'm just seeing if there's any other members, uh, from this, nope, seeing nope, okay. I've been told no from the crowd, absolutely not. Uh, so I'd be looking for a motion to table, uh, Item 2, Discussion Update, Warwick Special Education Advisory Committee.
Still moved.
Made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion on the tabling? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Item 2 has been tabled. Next item on the agenda, Discussion Update, FY '25 Monthly Financial Report and Year-end Review. Mr. McCaffrey.
Mr. Chair, members of the school committee in your package, you'll find a budget update for FY '25 compared to FY '24. Please take a look at it. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Are, looking for a motion to move approval on this item?
Still moved.
Made by Ms. Hazelwood. Seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion?
That's just an update item. That's not a, that's not an action item. No, it's just an update.
All right, strike that. So then, any discussion for members of the committee on this? Good catch, Mr. Testa.
So I get paid the big bucks.
Be careful, they're coming for it. Okay, seeing none. Uh, we're on to Item Number 4, Discussion Update, Capital and Construction Project Update. Mr. Gothberg.
Good evening, Chairman Gallerman, committee members. Quick update this month, uh, at Oakland Beach, the original work is completed. We are looking to add shades to a couple of rooms where originally they thought they were not needed, but I think we do, so we're getting pricing on that, and when they come in, if they're approved, we'll get them installed. Uh, Green Building, all work is completed. Warwick Neck, all work is completed. Greenwood, all work is completed. So those projects from last year are done, punch lists done. Uh, lagging items are completed. At Holloman, windows are 100% complete. Ceiling grid is 100% complete. Flooring is 100% complete. Building is connected to new power. Mechanical startups completed, lighting controls, startup and system training is next. CINET is, has started final connections to the Vicada system and reinstalling cameras. Bookshelves should be installed mid-June. Um, and we are ready for final cleaning there, so it's looking really, really good. Uh, Scott Septic, after discussion, uh, several times with Mr. Hennessy, um, we have no real new information, so we are going to reach out to the city to see if we can find a new contact for that plaza. And if we don't, then we're going to have to find another direction. So we've done everything, uh, we can to this point. We're going to try a new avenue and hope we connect to that plaza. So I'll report back next month on that. Summer projects, summits are wrapping up, and we are ready for the June 19th start. And, uh, one last item is, uh, the Governor's Commission on Disability had reached out to Superintendent Danbrook through Ms. Tedeschi. And, uh, we, Mr. Oliver and I have done a loop around the city looking at the exterior buildings and accessibility from the outside. Uh, originally, it had started with the polling locations. However, uh, they have come up with several issues. And, uh, what is going to happen from here is they're going to send us a report. We will, uh, review it, bring it to the Building Committee, then the School Committee. And then we will reach out to RIDE to see if the corrections that will have to be made can be done through remaining bond funds. Uh, right now, Mr. Oliver and I are projecting approximately a half a million dollars' worth of work that will be, need to be done to make these buildings legally accessible, uh, from parking and certain entries. Happy to answer any and all questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Gothberg. I just have a couple, uh, questions slash requests slash comments. The first is, can you, next week, can we put some time on the calendar to go do a Holloman site visit?
Yep, absolutely.
Fantastic. Uh, it'd be great if we could bring the principal along, um, and I could reach out to maybe the PTA president as well, and, um, you know, obviously we'll make sure...
I'd like to keep it low-key until it's waxed and ready to go.
Yeah, I just...
Mrs. Higgins has got some work to do.
Absolutely. I, I just, yeah, I, I think those two and, and myself and whatever my colleagues want to join, just, uh, it'd be good. So that way we can help continue to relay the same message from you through that particular community. Uh, the second is Scott, um, so you're saying there's possibly an issue with us not going with Septic, uh, not going straight to sewer?
Well, I, we don't have an answer. I, I think that, um, Mr. Hennessy has done, uh, quite a bit of reach-out to the people that we know. What's the proper term, Mr. Hennessy?
The agent for service of the property.
So what we will do, we will, we will talk to the building official and find out who is the owner of record, and we will attack from that angle. Okay? Because I, I'm going to, we're going to keep working on this as quickly as we can because the Septic solution is not a cost-effective solution. Plus, I think we might lose the playfield, which is not what we want to do.
Absolutely, and, and my only request on this is, is that we continue to quantify what it's costing us right now. Uh, as we're within FY '25 and dealing with the issues we're dealing with, if we, you know, we can continue to show contributing costs that, you know, have kind of impacted our ability to further drive down the deficit.
Right. You know, the, the good thing is summer is coming up, so that will stop for a couple of months anyway, but we, we need to move on as quickly, and we're, we're kind of stuck. So, uh, we're, we're doing different avenues of reach-out.
Great. But my next comment would be, with regards to the Phase 1 and 2 bonds, if you could, for the next meeting, if we can get an update of kind of, after you complete all of these projects with the elementary schools, could we kind of get like a balance of what's left over? Because I know there's like a few little items out there. Uh, for instance, former council president McAllister just got those new hoops over at Greenwood. Um, you know, if there's a couple bucks that could be used on that basketball court to get it repainted or resurfaced, that'd be cool. Uh, you know, things like that, you know, kind of a punch list, and obviously you prioritize it, but I'd just be curious to know what's remaining.
What, what the, the plan is to, uh, right now, the, our department is doing accounting uh, with the help of the Accounting Department and new members. Uh, exactly what we have available, what's left. We also have, uh, another series of, uh, exterior doors to do. what's left, we also have another series of exterior doors to do, you know, we're gonna do five schools this summer, and then the following summer we'll wrap up the rest of those, but meanwhile, we should be able to tell what we will have moving forward and would count into that, what it might cost for the sewer connection, and also this Governor Commissions on Disabilities requirements.
Great, and, and the last thing would be, do you have an, do you anticipate a certain week or month of receiving the report, the accessibility, ADA Accessibility Report from the state, only because right now, the proposed budget for the city presents us receiving $409,000, so if we're gonna have to make this investment in the upcoming fiscal year, and if we can't use the Phase One or Two bonds for those upgrades, we're certainly gonna have to start to have conversations with the city to-
Yeah, and this is-
-see if they can give us something outside of our MOE.
You know, this goes back to, this work should have been done years ago, money was not available to do it, and that's been pointed out to me quite sternly, that this should have been done a while ago, but we have one more round of walks to go, I think there's two or three more schools we have to hit before we get the final report, but I should have that to you for the next meeting, and we should be able to at least give you an estimate on what we believe it might cost.
Great, thank you, that's all I have. Members of the committee, anything else? Seeing none? Thank you, Mr. Gothberg.
Thank you.
Next item, item five, High School Project Update, Left Field.
Good evening, members of the committee, before I get into my update, I would like to say something on a personal note, I just wanna commend the committee and the people that come out here that represent special education. Part of my job is going to a lot of school committee meetings, and I have never seen so many advocates for special education come up to the podium and speak, whether it's SEAC, whether it's this Bridge Program, as a father of a child with autism, it really warms my heart that so much attention is being paid to these programs. With that said, the High School Project Update, we are approaching a very significant milestone tonight, we will be awarding our first packages for the Tollgate School Project, including the drum rock demolition, which will allow us to get started on that work very, very quickly, right after Memorial Day, well, that work will, will get started. We are also at this point, having awarded approximately 25% of the overall hard costs of the budget, of the project, we are trending below budget right now, so that's another significant milestone that we like to talk about tonight as we award several RTAs. Additionally, we recently held in a butters meeting, per the regulations of the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management for the Pilgrim School, as we had been talking about throughout the course of this project, we knew we were gonna run into some soil issues as we moved forward, that was one of our primary reasons of not releasing any contingency at that time, we did run into some soil issues, and we did, we were acquired by the Department of Environmental Management to hold a public meeting, we were attended with about 15 to 20 people attended that meeting, we had representatives of the Department of Environmental Management there, our environmental engineer, Left Field, Dimeo, the school department, we thought the meeting went very well, we got some feedback from the community about what they had seen on the course of that site over the last 20, 30 years, so that's, we're currently within that 30-day waiting period to solicit feedback on the Pilgrim site, so once that is wrapped up, we'll receive DEM's remediation plan, we don't expect it to be too, too much at all, with that being said, at our last committee meeting, we did, we did request, and the committee did approve, usage of contingency to remediate the soils as we discussed, that being said, we still have over $15 million within our owner's contingency, which is separate from our design and pricing contingency and our construction contingency, which both remain untouched as of right now, so we are currently trending with the awards tonight, we're, eight out of nine packages have come in under budget for a total savings thus far of about $3.5 million on the project, so that, the judicious use of our contingency, well, to keep driving that number down and get us as close to that $350 million number as, as is possible on this project, so happy to entertain any questions, my colleague, John Bates, will have more detailed information on the individual packages that we have, but again, good news today, it's a couple meetings in a row with, with some good news, so we're, we're pretty pumped about that.
Any comments from members of the committee? Mr. Tessa?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Spiegel. With respect to the contaminated soils at Pilgrim, the money that was moved out of the contingency, just explain for the public's verification, you took out, we took out $2 million for a worst-case scenario, correct?
So that's correct, so we had $17 million in owner's contingency that we had discussed at these meetings, saying we are not comfortable moving this into our budget yet, because there's unknowns out there that we still have to investigate, we still have to pull those in, so this $2 million is a, very much a worst-case scenario, as was discussed at that meeting, this $2 million would allow us to remove two feet and replace two feet of topsoil across the entire Pilgrim site. There's nothing in any of the information that believes us, that leads us to believe that will happen, in fact, I think approximately only, was it, I don't know the exact number, but I think it's only about maybe 11 of the 50 areas that we tested turned up anything at all.
Right, so what's unused just goes back into contingency?
That's right, in order for us to use those allowances, we would need approval from Steve Gothberg, Director of Capital Projects, to release those.
Thank you.
One other thing I did not mention, groundbreaking, so we have currently set up meetings with a, a group of people to help discuss our groundbreaking ceremonies, they're going to be targeted for June 9th and June 10th at Pilgrim and Tollgate, we'll have more details at the next school committee meeting to be reported out by Mr. Tessa, Mr. Galligan, but exciting milestone as well, to, for the two groundbreaking ceremonies to take place, even though some work will have already, already happened prior to the groundbreaking ceremonies.
Thank you, Mr. Spiegel. Mr. Tessa, you have anything else? You still have the floor?
Nope.
Okay, so, Mr. Spiegel, when he says next meeting, we actually have our next school committee meeting, we have a special meeting scheduled for Tuesday, the 27th, so we'll be able to give a little bit more information at that, that time, because actually, Tuesday, June 10th is the next school committee meeting, and that would be when presumably both of the groundbreakings have been completed, so also wanna congratulate Mr. Tessa on keeping his streak alive and dropping adification. Nine straight years of meetings, keeping it going, so anyone else? Anything for Mr. Spiegel on item number five, High School Project Update? Yep, Mr. Tessa?
I'm sorry, and Mr. Spiegel, we did discuss, now that we're, we're really at a, at an inflection point here, the social media site, the website you guys are maintaining, that's really gonna start to get ramped up, right, we have to have a meeting on what the expectation is, because now we're gonna see actual stuff happening and not just meetings, so that has to be as, as intense and inclusive and, and it's gonna be everything, so, 10 for. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I would just echo my colleagues' statements to get back to what we discussed about a year ago, looking for a dashboard, kind of showing us, are we on track in terms of time and, and on budget, I think one thing the state that does construction horribly did that was pretty cool were those signs that would be by all the street projects, where you would have like green, yellow, or red, and it would let you know, and who knows if they were even true, we don't, we don't know, it's, it is Rhode Island, but at the end of the day, they were nice visual diagrams that let us know as we were driving by if it was on time and on budget.
We'll see, we'll work with the web developer to, to see what we can do in terms of a dashboard, at, at a bare minimum, you'll have a schedule, you'll have, have the logistics plans, we do have a project signup, there's a way to contact us as well, I do the websites myself, so I'm gonna have to watch a few YouTube videos on, on how to get a dashboard set up.
And, and the last thing I have for you outside of that scary thought, is I've been contacted by a few residents in my district regarding traffic within the, within that Pilgrim Parkway area, if you could just start to put that on your radar and figure out, you know, how the trucks are gonna move in and out of that space there, that'd be appreciated.
So we have, our senior project manager on this job is a Warwick resident, he knows incredibly well the traffic situations, but just to put out this, what we do is when we actually, we actually dictate the traffic patterns to the subcontractors, so that they can include it as part of their bid, which means that they are required to follow the specific traffic patterns that we put out, and of course, during the school year, no deliveries during drop-off or pickup, we make sure that we mitigate noise on Rycast days and things like that, so there's a lot of work that goes in the logistics schedule, I think perhaps for that 27th meeting, we might do a run-through of the logistics with, with Dimeo, that we, team that we have here.
Fantastic, I appreciate that, so I can relay that back to our constituents there in that neighborhood, so, thank you. Anything else, members of the committee? Seeing none? Thank you, Mr. Spiegel.
Thank you.
We're now on to item six, Discussion Action, Contract Award, Bid Number 250018, Construction Testing Agent for Pilgrim and Tollgate High School, I'm looking for a motion to move approval.
Sold.
Made by Mr. Tessa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins, any comments from members of the committee on this particular item? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion passes four zero. Next item, Discussion Action, Approval of Tollgate Design Development, RIDE submission pending schematic design approval, looking for a motion to move approval-
Sold.
-made by Mr. Tessa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins, I, I'll turn it over to you now, Mr. Bates, the last item was pretty cut and dry, so that's why I, it was pretty easy for us, especially since the Building Committee presented it to us with a six-zero vote, so, and then everything checked out in terms of cost, so on this one here, I know you have some slides that you'd like to share, so I'll turn it over to you now.
Yes, thank you, John Bates. Left Field, Mr. Guglielmo from Sacocio and Associates has a brief presentation, he's gonna highlight some relatively small but very important improvements done in collaboration with the School Building Authority at the Tollgate High School. Following the presentation, we're gonna be seeking approval from the committee to submit the, the design development package to RIDE for review, that's gonna include these improvements that he's gonna present to you, of course, that's pending the RIDE's approval of the schematic design package, which we're expecting to get this week, so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Guglielmo.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm gonna present to you some of the upgrades and changes that came out of our recent meetings with the Department of Education, we've had some good meetings with them over the last month and a half, and they've made some good suggestions, especially keeping the comprehensive high school model with the high school and the CTC building, because they've allowed us to keep the CTC building and not have to build all the new spaces in the new school, so with that, I'll, I'll start the presentation. We were asked, if you remember, a couple of years ago when we submitted the Stage Two to the Department of Education, both Pilgrim and Tollgate Designs, we had a model school designed for both sites. Since then, obviously, everyone's aware that we've ran, we answered a lot of problems, topographical issues and ledge on the Tollgate site, so that building design had to change quite a bit from the model school plan, so RIDE had asked us to come up with a new bubble diagram, which you see on the left there, and from that, it translates to the layout of the, of the new school, and we also added the CTC building to that bubble diagram, so this was recently submitted to RIDE for approval. Some of the changes that came about were related to some of the wetlands areas that we found on the site, so the north parking lot that you see on the left-hand side, I have a pointer, but I don't wanna use it because you're all facing me, but the left-hand insert on that sheet you're looking at is the north parking lot. We had to basically eliminate a whole acre of asphalt roadway and parking, because the alterations to the wetland area were considered substantial alterations, and Department of Environmental Management would take about a year to review that, so we knew we didn't have a year to, to have them look at it, so we had to make some drastic changes to that parking lot. So we eliminated about an acre of parking there, we eliminated the bus loop in, on that north parking lot, and you can see the roadway that comes straight across in front of the, the school now is basically a parent pickup and drop-off, the red line that you see going around the parking lot is the, the routing for the parents, the blue lines you see there are routing for teachers. We have about 175 parking spaces in that north parking lot for teachers, other staff members, and visitors. We took the bus loop out and put the buses down in the roadway between the CTC building and the high school, just as it is now, the buses are lined up in that road, and that's, that's will be the, that'll be the basic pickup and drop-off for the buses because of the changes we had to make.
Mr. Guglielmo, can I just interrupt you for a sec, can you use your pointer, because if you're out there, I know we're looking at it here, but-
Okay.
-just so people in the audience can see what you're pointing at.
Sure, okay. So, it's basically this lane here, right in front of the schools, school, this is the parent drop-off and pickup lane, and it goes around the parking lot and they exit back out, okay? The parking lot insert on the, the right-hand side of the page is the CTC parking lot, basically, and I'll use the pointer again, the parking lot used to be up in this area, and extended all the way down to here, this whole thing was a parking lot, it's, it's existing parking right now, we're main, we're, we're gonna retain about 180 parking spaces here for students, okay? We're putting the baseball and softball field up on the east side of that lot, but again, you can see the red dash line that goes around the parking lot here, the Department of Education wanted us to enhance that parking lot for more student pickup and drop-off, so we made some changes to that parking lot, too, we, we lost a few parking spaces, but we did add a pickup and drop-off area for, for students and parents to, to stop there and wait for their students. Another thing that came out of the meetings with the Department of Education is because we're using the CTC building as part of the comprehensive plan, they wanted us to enhance the connection between the two buildings, so, well, basically, this is, this is an enlargement of the north parking lot, you can actually see the, it's a little bit, where are we here, right here, this, this lane right in front of the school, okay, and then it would loop around and then exit back out this way here, okay, so we got about 175 parking spaces in this lot, this area here is the wetlands area where we used to have some parking and a roadway that went around the back of the site, but that all got eliminated because of the issues with DEM. And this is the south parking lot, a little enlargement of that, where we, you can see the red line, that's the, the parent pickup and drop-off area. This is the enhanced connection between the, the new high school and the CTC building. Some of the suggestions with the Department of Education was to enhance, oop, I'm sorry, enhance this lower level of the high school to make it large enough, we enlarged the stairwell, we enlarged the exterior plaza area, and we widened this walkway that brings students to and from the bus area and across the street from the CTC entrance here, so that will go, all got enhanced with, with the changes that we had to make with our discussions with the Department of Education. Also with that, we added windows to the office area, the existing office area that is in the CTC building for visual connection between the two buildings, we have this green space up here, and I'll show you this in a lot, in a large plan, but this green space here that you see is an admin office, and this green space down here is an admin office, and they can actually see what's going on on that walkway from either side, okay? Other changes that we made with the CTC building was that we added three core classrooms in this building, this is the upper floor, and we added special education space, and we added a physics lab to this, so it's more in keeping with the comprehensive model for the schools. This shows you an enlargement of what I was just referring to, this is the lower level of the main school, the Department of Education asked us to add a secondary secure vestibule that you he, see here, this space here used to be the SR- This space here used to be the SRO space, but now it's an admin space, and we moved the SRO office back here. So this is a secure lower-level lobby and a secure vestibule. So anyone coming to this area, they they wouldn't be able to get in. Obviously, they'd have to get buzzed in, and they'd have to, you know, obviously, get greeted by someone in the admin or SRO. If no one's there, then they'd ask to come up to the north side of the school to the main entrance. The perspectives on the right-hand side are actually the view that you see from from both buildings, looking down. This is looking down to the CTC building from the admin, and this is looking in the opposite direction. I'm sorry, this is this is the CTC, and this is looking from the the main school down to the CTC building. And this is just a perspective of looking at both from a distance further back. This is the new windows we're putting in the admin area of the CTC, and then you can see the entrance to the high school and the beyond here. Just to reiterate some of the the changes that we did make to the high school. The special ed department here was is now more dispersed throughout the school. That was a suggestion that was made by the Department of Education. We made some subtle changes to the auditorium. We took out a lift that was here, an ADA lift, and we put a ramp in. That was a suggestion by by Ride. We made the orchestra pit area a little deeper. We made the backstage a little deeper, and we also enhanced some of the teaching spaces in the back of the auditorium here. We did add, we what we did was in the CTC building building, when I when I mentioned that we put some core classrooms there, we took the core classrooms out of this location on the first floor of the high school, and we we switched it out with this health occupancies space. This used to be in the CTC building. So we switched it to the main building and switched the three classrooms to the CTC building, again, keeping with the comprehensive model. This is the upper floor of the school. You see some of these spaces in blue are some of the dispersed special education spaces, and the purple are some of the CTC spaces that are required to be dispersed throughout the school. One other thing that the Department of Education wanted us to look at was to add some light wells in some of these interior rooms here. So these three spaces here, the two blue, the small blue spaces and the pink space, on both wings, you can see that down here, too, these three spaces, they all have light wells now with skylights to the roof to try to get light down to those spaces. So that was one of the additional changes that Ride requested. And again, this is the third level, same thing with more dispersment of special ed spaces in blue and CTC spaces in purple. This is the the plans of the CTC building. Down on the lower level, we're maintaining the automotive, the carpentry, and the electrical space, and also the culinary arts is remaining where it is. The the big change here was we're adding a pre-engineered metal building on the left-hand side of that lower drawing for marine welding. They're going to have its own space, but it's going to be connected to the CTC building with a walkway, with a covered walkway. It's actually a corridor. The upper level, we brought the CAD lab back from Pilgrim to Tollgate, so that's staying in this space here. It's getting enlarged. It's getting a lot a little bit larger space. Cosmetology came back over from Pilgrim, so that's going in the same space it was before. This green space in the center is the physics lab. The blue is a special ed room, and these three light blue are the new core classrooms that we're doing. These are a couple of perspectives of the auditorium with just some of the enlargements of some of the enhancements we made. You can see a little bit better here, the the ramp in the front of the auditorium. We did enhance this space in the front, as I said, for orchestra pit. That was that was another requirement or request by Ride. We also have a couple of rows of removable seats in the front of the auditorium in case they needed even more space. And again, these two lecture areas in the back of this auditorium will have some of the some of the seats back here will have tablet arms, so they can use it as a lecture area. You can just see a couple of perspectives on the right. These are just some drawings that Ride had asked us to put together to show some of the electronics, stage curtains, and things of that that effect for the design of the of the auditorium. Same here, we have a catwalk that's shown above the ceiling here. This is going to be where the spotlights and all the lighting is going to be for the stage. Okay? We have a catwalk that spans across the auditorium. Again, these are just sections of the space. Looking at the procentium from the seating area. And this is just an outline of some of the the chips points that we need to have for Ride. We're we're shooting for 180 points. I believe we're at 165 to 170 right now, and it's it's looking that we that we can attain the proper points for Ride. This is just still preliminary, but we're still working on that. This is a perspective of the the front of the building. We're using, this is brick, and the lighter panels are metal panels. Okay? So it's a mixture of metal panel and brick on the entire building. The red you see here is also metal panels along with the canopy. Another suggestion that Ride asked us to look at was enhance the open courtyard a little more than we had. We had originally had some activities out there, but then with the budget issues and things, we removed some of them, but they thought it was a good idea to keep them. So what we did was we took another look at it, and the drawing on the the bottom right you can see is actually a plan of the courtyard. And we have a an outdoor learning area on the upper left of that that insert. On the right, you see some tables there, though that's outdoor dining. That's because it's right off the dining commons inside the building. The bottom right of that little sketch, you'll see that rectangle, that's a greenhouse, and you can see that in the rendering on the right-hand side there. And then this half-circular area on the bottom right is an art platform for the 3D art, which is a a classroom that's right off that space to the right. And again, being that it's an open courtyard, Ride asked us to put a fence and fence it in. So this is a fence across the front here. So it is a secure courtyard, but it's still open. It's not and it's not enclosed with with any any building walls. And obviously, the rendering, you can see the learning area back here, the dining area back here, and again, the greenhouse in the foreground. These are just some perspectives and studies. The one on the upper left is just looking back up at the the building from the baseball field. The one on the bottom is obviously looking back to the high school from the football field. And then the south entrance concept sketch is up in the right-hand corner. That's what the entrance concept looked like before we enhanced it, but this is this is basically shows the the new secure vestibule here and the admin office here with the windows with a new canopy system. These are just some interior perspectives. This is the main secure lobby of the building. As you come into the building, the glass with the blue wall behind it is the admin area. The space with the green wall in the center is, oop, I'm sorry, going too fast. This green area back here is a reading room that's associated with the media center, and this is a secure space because all these doors are able to be locked down in an emergency. This is a view looking back at the lobby from the the corridor in front of the media This is a perspective looking inside the media center. It's a two-story space with the windows that look in from up above. This is a close-up of that reading area that I mentioned with the green wall from the lobby. This is a perspective looking into the main hallway or or circulation spine, looking at the dining commons on the right and the entrance to the gymnasium on the left. This is another view of the dining commons, looking from the opposite end, the two-story space. You can see the learning stair in the background that could be used for lecture. Students eat their lunch on those stairs, or, you know, the the staff can can, you know, use it as a teaching space throughout the year. This is just a close-up of the dining area, and you can see the learning stair on the left-hand side there. And this is just a perspective of looking down one of the educational classroom wings. The rooms that you see with the glass here in the center are the rooms that I mentioned that'll have light wells coming down from skylights above, because they're interior rooms. We tried to get as much daylight into these spaces as possible. And this is one of the science rooms, the typical science lab. I think that's it. I believe that's the last slide? Yep.
Any questions or comments?
Any questions?
Members of the committee?
No. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Guglielmo. Thank you. I sat in on those meetings with Ride the last six or seven or so weeks. We had five meetings. They were all very good meetings. Ride made some suggestion. I mean, I'm not a builder, you guys are, but but your team, you know, embraced them, took them some, you know, we're dealing with riots sometimes, it's a pain because they they changed their mind, as you know. But my takeaway from the last meeting was that Dr. DeSilva was was very pleased with
Yes.
With the changes that were made, the progress that was made, and my from where I sat, it was he was good to go. He was good to submit this, and then they'll approve it. So fingers crossed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hazelwood?
Yes, I just have a question. I noticed that you said a couple of the programs for CTC are moving back over to Tollgate. Do you know what the balance is between the CTC program at Pilgrim and Tollgate?
The number?
The number of each of programs at each school.
I don't know offhand. I I know that we took two programs from Pilgrim, brought them over to Tollgate, so I don't know if we ended up with with 10 versus eight, or I'm not sure. Maybe, Steve, do you know?
What I can say is that there was a request made by the Career and Tech to move Cosmetology back, and then the other was the the health program to move back because of proxim and the CAD program. Because of, number one, the CAD program, they work closely with the Carpentry Program, and they wanted to be in the same building, and the Health Program works with St. Elizabeth, and they didn't want to come across the city. So we did some Tetris moves. It's not as balanced as we originally planned, but it's what the Career and Tech program wanted. So that's what we tried to do, was accommodate their requests.
I think the Health Program would have worked nicely with the Lifesavers Program.
Yeah, there there was a real pushback on that one because of their work with St. Elizabeth moving across the city.
It's a big city.
I'm just, I'm just, you know, trying to
I know you're the messenger, but, thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Hazelwood?
No, that's all.
Thank you. Any other com-? Mr. Wiggins?
Seemed surprised. I'm just curious, the the parking, you said we lost some parking. You know roughly about how many spaces were lost with the wetlands?
We lost about 15 spaces in the lower parking lot, but we still have about 180 parking spaces down there. Total on the site, we have about, I think it's maybe 399, 400 spaces.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments from members of the committee? Yul?
Thank you. Yeah, so my comments will just continue to remain the same after you guys start to get through your big expenses here that we're about to discuss, and as cost estimates become more understood, obviously, increasing that parking, especially at Tollgate, given that it's kind of like two high schools, right? You've got Tollgate in itself, and then you have the Career and Tech Center. So that's that's important as you guys continue to work out there. And then the the gym, we duplicated what we did over at Pilgrim, right, with the increasing of of seating within the gymnasium.
Correct.
And the square footage of everything there.
Yes, yep, we need the basketball court bigger, increase the seating, yes.
Fantastic. So that's that's all I have. Seeing that there's no other comments from members of the committee? All those in favor? Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion passes four zero. Next item, we have
Thank you.
Approval of, no, thank you. Next item, we have Discussion Action, Approval of DMEO General Conditions Initial Release for Tollgate, looking for a motion to move approval.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa and Ms. Hazelwood, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion for members of the committee? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries four zero. Item number nine, Discussion Action, Approval of DMEO Drum Rock Demolition Recommendation, looking for a motion to move approval.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins and Ms. Hazelwood. Any discussion for members of the committee? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries four zero. Next item, item number 10, Discussion Action, Approval of DMEO Tollgate Elevator Recommendation, looking for a motion to move approval.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Ms. Hazelwood and Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion for members of the committee? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Next, I'm looking for a motion to move approval, Discussion Action, Approval of DMEO Tollgate Site Recommendation.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion?
Mr. Testa, thank you. I would just, this is the site work, right? Yeah, so just just I'm going to use the edification again, just so public certification, this bid came in 2.3 million under our budget, and and the only one that's come in over budget so far is the drum rock demolition by about $94,000, $95,000. So as Mr. Spiegel mentioned earlier, it's not a guarantee that every successive bid's going to come in less, but the trend line is favorable, and I think that's a good thing. And and that's from a lot of hard work by all the people sitting sitting out there. So I'm just, I'm very, very pleased with with the progress, so that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Testa. I'll echo my colleague's statements that the other three items that we approved, seeing the numbers coming in beneath what was budgeted for those particular items. It's great to see. And I know there's some thought out there in the public that possibly we used less material or less inferior material, but DMEO's been fantastic. They have a great lineup of experts that have worked with them on this project and with Left Field, our OPM, and all we can do, obviously, none of us are in this field. They present us the costs, they present us the recommendation, and on these items, the building committee passed them all unanimously. So that tells us that the experts that are on that building committee, the industry experts as well as the our construction manager being DMEO and our OPM have, you know, certainly feel comfortable with what they're putting forward. So I agree with my colleague, Mr. Testa. It's great to see the numbers coming in beneath budget on a lot of these items. And yes, there's going to be instances where we're going to see items possibly come in either at or above what we budgeted for them, and I think we should expect to continue to see that as this project progresses, so. Mr. Spiegel, you have something to add?
Just one item. Earlier tonight, you approved a Materials Testing and Inspection Agent as part of this project. That Materials Testing Inspection Agent is an independent, third-party that makes sure that everything that we are pouring that everything that we are pouring meets code specifications, it means the concrete is what we say the concrete needs to be, it means the welds on the steel are the welds that are supposed to be on the steel. These are independent, third-parties that inspect all of the work on your behalf, they are not contracted through DMEO, they are not contracted through Left Field, they are contracted directly by the owner. I did just want to get that out there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Spiegel. Are there any other comments from members of the committee? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes four zero. There you go, Ms. Neko, Tollgate's off and running. Next item, discussion update, interim superintendent update as presented by Mr. McCaffrey.
Mr. Chair, members of the school committee, we've continued to focus on restoring the public confidence in our fiscal management of the schools. As you know, we have a full complement in our finance office with an experienced executive director of finance, an experienced controller who's a CPA, and an experienced assistant controller. As a team, we've continued to meet twice a week to review all purchases being made, and we've also focused on achieving efficiencies in purchasing, in the purchasing process. It's tough getting old and reading small fonts here. With that said, our focus is to further reduce the FY '25 school deficit and close the year in better position than we are at this moment. We have been attending the school budget commissions as a team, and with that, I've been impressed by the work of our team. Ms. Quirk had presented a piece on our purchasing process, well-received, very thorough, excellent work. Yamin Rodriguez had presented the audit and where we stand, excellent presentation, and he was supported by Carlisle Vincent. The commission was impressed with their work, very positive, there've been very thoughtful questions from the commission. Recently, myself and Dr. Taylor spent some time today touring some of our higher-cost programs that, that drive some of the expenses that we have, so the commission could understand our programming. It's not just the number, we took that number and we showcased why that number is so expensive, so they can understand why we need the funding we are requesting to operate Warwick Schools. We will be doing that once again next week, and anything that we can do to offer support to the budget commission to understand the numbers, to see that we're supporting kids and we're supporting kids to be successful, we will do, to make sure we receive the necessary funds so Warwick Public Schools can operate. Some of the feedback that I've noticed on community events, I've attended a lot of concerts this spring, I've seen Mr. Testa two or three times. All I can say is excellent work by our teachers, excellent performances by our students, it opened your eyes, and you know, when you look at a budget and you're thinking about numbers, it's money well-spent, what's happening in our, in our music programs and our chorus programs in the district. There are many end-of-the-year celebrations, as we approach the end of the, as we approach the end of the year, I want to take a moment to provide an update on various end-of-the-year celebrations happening across our schools. These events are an important part of our school culture and provide meaningful opportunities to celebrate the accomplishment of our students, staff, and families. Graduation ceremonies, the high school graduations are scheduled for June 11th at the Ryan Center, you should be receiving invitations to those events. You know, hats off to the class of 25, they've been resilient, they've gone through a lot, and they're right at the finish line. With one more push, and in four weeks from now, we'll be having two graduations at the Ryan Center to cap off their experience at Warwick Schools. Promotion and moving up ceremonies, these celebrations help foster a sense of accomplishment and provide students with encouragement as they move forward. And finally, awards nights and recognitions, these events showcase the well-rounded excellence of our students. I'd ask that you pay attention to the district calendar to see these events, and look forward to seeing you at these events. We want to celebrate our accomplishments, we want to show our students that we care, and to me, it takes a budget number, and it showcases what we've done, and it's money That's all I have for an update this evening, Mr. Chair, and members of the school committee, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Any comments from members of the committee for interim superintendent McCaffrey? Seeing none? Next item we have is discussion update, cost analysis, Gordon administrative move as presented by Mr. McCaffrey.
Last month, we presented to you a move of options for the central office. In that presentation, we discussed that the current facility in the near future would need $3.175 million in improvements, such as a tie-in to the sewer, new roof to both buildings, new boiler, for a total of $3.175 million. We discussed some lease options, and we are fine-tuning our proposal to present to you on where we want to, what we should consider for an RFP if we do decide to move forward with this matter. Some areas of concern that we'd like to adjust would be storage, currently, do we need to store everything we have in our current facility? What can it be put into a more permit storage area at a reduced rate? And looking at that, we have about approximately 5,000 square feet of storage. And then filtering through what we store, we have to determine what we use on a regular basis, there are personnel files that are looked at weekly, there are other files that are looked at monthly, and then what files do we have that haven't been looked at in a while, and what we use for storage. The second piece is to reassess the offices that we have and see if there's any efficiency to achieve in, in a smaller facility. In doing so, looking at both storage and at our current plan, we could reduce the cost by approximately $90,000, that would bring us in line to what the operating cost currently is for the facility of $610,000. With this option of reducing the footprint, we would have an operating cost of approximately $590,000. So it's pretty much very close to the cost of leasing versus staying in the current facility. The biggest savings would be the avoidance of the $3.175 million in capital improvements that we would need in the next five years. Do you have any questions? Please ask.
Any comments from members of the committee?
Mr. Testa? Mr. McCaffrey, would you be, at some point, creating something for us, like a document that kind of lays out everything you just explained?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
This, this month, we spent time analyzing our storage and then analyzing our current facility and seeing where we can achieve some efficiency with the size. Storage is a tricky piece because there are some records that we have stored that we look at weekly, other records that we look at monthly, and other records that we, we don't look at at all.
Yeah, yeah, and I would say, you know, the cost avoidance of the, of the capital projects, I would still maintain that, you know, ultimately, the city owns the building, so I don't, I don't see how those capital projects should be expected to come out of a school's operating budget, they're more capital projects that should be, in a perfect world, to be bond-funded, or maybe if we had a revolving capital reserve, which I've been asking for for about three years, shameless plug, we wouldn't have this conversation because the project we get done, the housing able to be reimbursed, we go into that account, and it would feed itself. So, but, but I think that's a conversation to have with the city, to see if they'd be willing to, some way, shape, or form, take care of some or all of that for us, so, that's a bridge we cross later.
Thank you, Mr. Testa. Any other comments from members of the committee?
Yeah, I'm happy to see the administration continue to work through this. I asked that we continue to dive deeper into the cost, because I think, I think we may be on to something here, either it's that we make the move, or that we do discuss with the city assistance outside of our maintenance of effort to upgrade that facility and get it to where it needs to be, if we intend on staying there, plus, you know, and hearing what the costs are going to be for enhancing that facility, and then tonight, we hear about Scott, and potentially what we've got to do over there, and if it can be captured within those bond funds, and then now the ADA upgrades that might be needed to our facilities throughout the district. I just see the dollar signs, and I just see this cost rising. So we're going to need some assistance, or we're going to need to make a change, and, and maybe go elsewhere to where we can control our costs and have fixed costs, so, appreciate the admin continuing to look through this and work through this, and hopefully, we can get to a point where we finally have beat it up enough, so, thank you very much. Any other comments? Discussion? None? Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 14, discussion action, superintendent retirement, I'm looking for a motion to move approval?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. I'll just, I'll make a short comment on behalf of the school committee, and really, the community. We're so grateful to Superintendent Danbrook for her near four decades of dedication and service to our school, district, and city. Anyone who's had the opportunity to either work with Lynn, or interact with Lynn, or just pass Lynn, you could obviously tell instantly that she's a woman who was born to work in the field of education. Hearing stories about what she brought to this district at various levels, whether she was a teacher, a principal, an administrator, and most recently, superintendent, it just affirms that she's a true professional, but she also embodies the traits and characteristics of an educator. It's been an absolute pleasure to have her lead this district the past several years. Certainly, this committee wishes her nothing but the best, though this is very sad, I think the cliche, the old cliche is, don't be sad that it's over, be happy that it happened, and we're certainly very happy to have had Superintendent Danbrook as part of the community in the Warwick Public Schools these past four decades, so wish her all the best, and certainly more to come on Superintendent Danbrook, certainly, this, this won't be the end of mentioning her name. With that, I'm looking for a motion to move approval, excuse me, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries, four zero. Next item we have is item 15, discussion action, appointment of acting superintendent, looking for a motion to move approval?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Ms. Hazelwood and Mr. Wiggins. The comment I will make on this is, at this time, the school committee is certainly evaluating all of our options. First step was first working through everything with Ms. Danbrook, and with her retirement, and now the, the next step is certainly appointment of our next superintendent. So with that stated, until we've kind of worked through the whole process, the committee feels that it's appropriate to continue to have Mr. McCaffrey operate as the acting superintendent from now through June 30th, and we'll have further comments after the end of this school year. So that is what the decision is of this committee, and we will be making no further comments on, at this time, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries, four zero. Next item we have, item 16, discussion action, I'm looking for a motion to move approval for out-of-state competition, this is for the Warwick Area Career and Tech Center Skills USA competition individuals to head to Georgia for the USA Skills Competition.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Ms. Hazelwood and Mr. Wiggins, any discussion? Just best of luck to all of those competing in the, the competition on behalf of the committee. Anything else from members of the committee? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries, four zero. If my colleagues do not mind, I'm looking to take items 17 to 22 as a packet here, these are Perkins, Grant, Title I funded expenditures that are one-time budgeted expenses, there are no recurring costs there, but the expenses that are before us are all Perkins, Grant, and Title I funded expenses. Any opposition to doing that? All right, so I'm looking for a motion to move approval? Annalise Record is grant-funded, Title I funded? Yes. So items 17 to 22 are all grant-funded and Title I funded, or Perkins-funded. So you, no issues there with any of my colleagues? Excuse me, I, my line went down a little too far. Thank you very much, Ms. Gussino. So it would be, I'm looking for a motion to move approval on items 17 to 21, these would be for change order Rexel PO 25001047, Cisco PO change order 2500815, contract award to Cisco Boston 22050, contract award for Walley Computer number 21863, and Annalise Record number 22047.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Ms. Hazelwood, any discussion on any of these particular purchases? Mr. Testa?
Mr. Chair, I have two questions, I think they're both for, no, ones for the Cisco, $7,833. It's just a question, I don't know if anyone can answer it, it's, it's about gas stoves and stuff like that. I'm assuming that this, this award includes installation, we don't install our own equipment, right? I don't think. I'm not sure. Because in it, it says, "One-year limited parts and labor warranty covers product purchased and installed in the USA only standard." So I don't know if, if we're going to be installing this on our own, because they're gas stove, so I would imagine you'd need a plumber, a licensed plumber?
We would, we do have plumbers on staff.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't another expense that would have been associated with this. Okay.
We do, we do have plumbers on staff if need be.
Okay. So the next one I have, this is for Dr. Taylor. On the Walley computer, I noticed that on the Chromebooks that we're buying, the cost per unit was $303.76, but when we were doing the budget hearings, when you were buying 1,900 of them, and they were $200 bucks apiece. So my question is, is this because we're only buying a handful of them, or is this tariff-related? Because I don't think these Chromebooks are made in the United States.
Excellent question. Actually, just as a point of clarification, because I do think the memo contradicts itself in one piece, these are for the Chrome boxes, not the Chrome books, so, I know it's listed in the memo, Chrome boxes, but then later on, it says Chromebook. The Chrome boxes are the little box, that's the brains of the Promethean board that mounts to the back and hangs off the back, they're not the...
Okay, so on the Walley quote, line number 11, says HP Fortis 11G10 Chromebook, for 15.
Oh, that's correct, yeah, I was looking up above.
Yeah, so those are 303.76, so I, I just don't, I don't remember when we approved the budget. Do we normally get our resupply from Walley?
We do, yeah, and I, I think you hit the nail on the head with the 15, when we buy Chromebooks, we usually buy 1,900, which draws the price down, buying 15, there's not as much of a...
Yeah, no, if you could just look into that, because I mean, it is...
We'll take a look.
It's $103 more, so that's like 50% more.
Yep, definitely.
That's all I have, thank you.
Any other comments from members of this committee? Seeing none, again, the motion has been moved and seconded, it's for items 17 to 21, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Teske, you got that right, 17 to 21? Fantastic.
Mr. Chair?
So good to have you back in the district.
Mr. Chair?
He's calling you.
Item number two is grant-funded based upon the requisition in front of me?
22.
Yes.
Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion to move approval, discussion action, contract award, school outfitters number 21907.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins and Ms. Hazelwood, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries, four zero. Item 23, discussion action, contract award Walley Computer number 21905, looking for a motion to move approval?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa, seconded by Mr. Wiggins, any discussion on this? Should have added, again, my little preface here, the items 17 and up to this point, we're making a motion to move approval, and we're sending it on to the Warwick Public Schools' Budget Commission for authorization, so. Even though we pass it, it goes to a... Even though we pass it, it goes to another level. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries for zero. Item number twenty-four. Discussion action. Contract Award Delta Mechanical number two-one-eight-eight-three. Looking for a motion to move approval and send on to the Warwick Public Schools Budget Commission for authorization. Mr. Testa?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Hello, Mrs. Higgins. I don't know if you have the answer to this right now, but I know this is for a compressor to the HVAC system here. And I know in twenty-twenty, we went through a spate, we replaced some compressors like we were changing socks. So, and I know in twenty-twenty-three, we replaced six of them because I found the old document. But I don't know if this was one of those that would have been replaced a couple of years ago? Is this a separate one? Okay. And because I don't know what kind of warranties come with those, if it's one year. I mean, if it was one that was replaced in, I think it was February of twenty-three, when we replaced six of them. But I can send you the email if you want me to. Great, thank you.
Any other comments from members of the committee? Imagine if yourself doesn't get back to that email that you sent? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries for zero. Ms. Higgins, I'm up on a roll here. Item twenty-five. Discussion action. Contract Award Amortis SP two-five-zero-four-two-seven. Looking for a motion to move approval to the Budget Commission for authorization.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa. Seconded by Mr. Wiggins and Ms. Hazelwood. Any discussion on this item? Mr. Testa?
I have a question. Ms. Barber, thank you. My only question is, I noticed that they had the itemization. So how do we verify the hours they're telling us they, that they're billing us for? Is there, how do we do that?
So we do have, we have a set schedule, so we do keep track of that within the...
Okay, so it's a, so someone's coming here Tuesday? Okay.
They've taken over a caseload for a full-time...
Got it, thank you.
Any other discussion on item number twenty-five? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries for zero. Next item, looking for a motion to move approval. Discussion action. Warwick School Committee Resolution in Support of H five three nine nine, an Act Relating to Education Unfunded Mandate Bill?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa. Seconded by Ms. Hazelwood and Mr. Wiggins. I'll just, I'll just make a quick remark on this. I'm hoping my colleagues on the stage will support this resolution and believe in this bill as much as I. Prior to getting onto the school committee, I recall Mr. Testa speaking about unfunded mandates. Anyone who's ever attended a city council budget hearing, you might recall former Councilman from Ward Three, Councilman Tim Howe, who was also an educator, and he would constantly talk about unfunded mandates. Everyone in this state continues to talk about unfunded mandates, but the Warwick School Committee picked up the ball and ran with it. And there's incredible people down here, I'm just, I'm gonna shout a couple out, Dr. Taylor, Dr. Schultz, Mr. McCaffrey, Ms. Danbrook. These individuals, I looked at them and said, can you, can you help me articulate to the people at the State House what a pain all of this is to us from a financial perspective? And they all agreed to drive to Providence on a cold December day and walk into the State House and sit there for an hour and a half, two hours, and discuss unfunded mandates. And now we see it has materialized into a bill. It has gone through the House Committee on Finance. Other cities and towns are doing exactly what we're doing here tonight. They passed their resolution, most recently Coventry. The Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns have put their name behind this as well. I believe, Mr. Testa, correct me if I'm wrong, it's the Rhode Island Association of Superintendents and Principals has also put their support behind it. The Rhode Island Association of School Committees has put their support behind it. And more school committees throughout the state are docketing this for discussion. Also, for the Warwick Public Schools Budget Commission, as I mentioned, they passed this resolution and the Warwick City Council has docketed this for their next meeting for discussion. And it's all because of this committee, this administration, and this city, hopefully bringing relief and assistance to not only Warwick but all cities and towns throughout. If this bill is marginally successful, we're talking about multimillion dollars in capital freed up within our budget, allowing us to draw down our deficit or spend that money on other needs of our students here. By no means does this bill, that is a bipartisan bill, it's not red, it's not blue, it's not left, it's not right, it is a bill that just is common sense. It addresses the fact that cities and towns are not provided financial autonomy. Dr. Schultz gave an incredible example that was referenced on the House floor and committee where one particular software is imposed on our district. And she can find a similar software at a more cost-effective price tag that provides the same service to our students. Same thing with out-of-district transportation. The administration has looked into using one or two vendors having a hybrid solution for out-of-district transportation and the cost is either a third or half of what we're currently paying with the one vendor that's imposed upon us by the state. So if this, if this House bill is even marginally successful, it will allow us to do a lot more. And we hear tonight about all the upgrades we need to make to our facilities and the costs, and the big question is where are we gonna find that money? Where are we gonna find that money? And it's either gotta come from our budget or the city budget. And so this helps us free up some money and we can redirect those, that cash to other, you know, programs and services. So I hope my colleagues will support this. Any other comments or questions from members of the committee on this? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion passes for zero. Next item, I'm looking for a motion to move approval. Discussion action. Approval Rhode Island Alternative Academy Foundation Donation to Pay O'Neill Electric to Complete the Installation of Air Conditioning Systems at fifty-one Draper Ave, Warwick, Rhode Island.
So moved.
Made by Mr. Testa. Seconded by Ms. Hazelwood and Mr. Wiggins. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries for zero. We're now on to public comment. Individual comments will be respectfully limited to three minutes per person, with public comment not to exceed forty-five minutes. Though the content of comment will not be restricted, it is the hope of this committee that citizens, committee members, and the administration alike will be respectful of each other's right to speak, tolerant of different points of view, and mindful of everyone's time. This public comment period is for general comments or concerns. Speakers are asked to state their name for their record. Dr. Schultz?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lisa Schultz, the Curriculum Director for Warwick Public Schools. I promise to be brief and under the two-minute mark, or is it three? It's three. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to congratulate Patty Cusino on her retirement that was announced this evening. She's been an incredible thought partner with the curriculum team. She was not only the Principal of the Year before she was appointed in this position, but has been an incredible elementary director for the past four years. She has shown us tenacity, incredible organization, and hands-on leadership with her principals that she works with every single day. She's incredibly professional, a great communicator, and is extremely visible to the point that all the kids recognize her at every building. It's awesome to see. I will deeply miss working with her. I'm getting a little bit emotional, but I just want to say thank you Patty for everything that you've done for Warwick. You've helped us move scores. You've helped really engage new principals that have entered into Warwick and really brought us to new heights. So I just wanted to say congratulations and you'll be dearly missed.
Mark Mainville from Mentor at Island. I rise to do the same thing. I didn't want to jump the gun in the first public comment and mention Patty, but she's been one of the champions of the mentoring program, a pleasure to work with. You know, there are people that get it and people that don't. And by and large in Warwick, every, most people get it, but Patty has been just a great champion for the mentoring program and somebody that we've loved working with. So all the best to you and your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My daughter is a student at the Bridges Program, and I just wanna say thank you to everyone that was involved in putting the presentation together. And I'm just so grateful for the positive impact this program has done for her and all the students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, could you just, your name for the record, please?
My name is Joanna Surriel, and my daughter's name is Jemeline Bernard.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Dan Camella. I'm the proud father of Danny Camella, who is a proud graduate of Pilgrim High School and a current student in the Bridge Program. Back in January, I attended my first school committee meeting, I've never been to one before, to advocate for my son Danny, as well as the other young adults in the program and even the educators in the program. At that time, I expressed numerous concerns, and I'm here tonight to let you know that each and everyone has been addressed. And as Sammy did such a nice job tonight, Sammy Davy, it's been completely turned around. We spoke and you listened, and more importantly, you cared and you acted. Within twenty-four hours of that meeting back in January, I heard from Mr. Carter, Mr. McCaffrey, and several other school committee members, which was, to me, a great sign of things to come and foreshadowing of things to come because I really wasn't sure how things went. I saw how big your agenda was, and I just wasn't sure if we were gonna have time to get this done. And it's amazing how much time and effort and care everybody put into this. Within a week, the parents began collaborating with Mr. Carter, Mr. McCaffrey, Sammy Davy, and Lynn Danbrook, who came to our meetings to voice her opinion and, more importantly, listen. She did a lot of listening, took a lot of notes, and as did all the people that I just mentioned. Right out of the gate, our goal was to develop a sustainable program that was built on openness, collaboration, and a student-first mentality. Since then, together, we completely rebranded the program. We have a mission statement, a new program name, and a new website, thanks to Joe Napolillo and Jess Kingston. So I was in a meeting with Joe, and he was there as the IT guy, and it was a great thing. He just stepped up and he said, I can do this, I can help. You know, and I think that's the type of thing, like, once you start talking about things and we start collaborating, people will, you know, come out of the woodwork and offer to help. And really, it really warmed my heart that night when Joe said that, because to me, it was like another great sign. The website's beautiful, colorful, and inviting, and most importantly focuses on students. And there's even a portal for community partners to easily sign up to participate as a community partner in the program, which I think is part of the sustainable part. So being able to have...
Thirty seconds.
Yeah. Thank you. So Sammy Davy did a great job. She turned the program around. There's more jobs, more opportunities. And I guess the last thing I'll say is she even found a window, which to me is symbolic of hope and, you know, the future. And I think the students in this program are gonna thrive, and they're gonna leave the program someday with great skills and a great future, thanks to all the hard work of Sammy and every educator in that building who rolls up their sleeves every day to make it a better place. So thank you for listening, and thank you for doing everything to turn this around. It's amazing what was accomplished in four months. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your feedback, both in January and this evening. We appreciate both the good and the bad, so thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Jacob Maduro, Warwick resident, Warwick graduate, Warwick teacher. I want to preface these comments by saying that I supported the bond, I helped with the flyers, I held a sign, I still support the bond because it's needed, but I do have some concerns that are increasing concerns and that I want to put on the record tonight. These concerns are mainly around two things, lack of classroom space and lack of teacher space, and how those things have been presented or, and frankly, not presented to the teachers in the community, as well as the impact that this is going to have on the educational experience. A couple of months ago, I was at this mic talking about the lack of classroom space, how every teacher's not gonna have their own room. It was communicated to me that there were gonna be teacher hubs. Okay. They said they just finished planning it. If I emailed them, they'll send it to me. So on April fourth, I sent an email. I know it was a little delayed, but I wanted to make sure everything, they had plenty of time to finalize. Didn't hear back. Last week, I sent the follow-up email. They apologized, I get it. They forwarded the email to other people. I still haven't heard back. Again, fool me once, shame on me, fool me twice, you know. I'm not gonna go into how...
Mr. Maduro, I'm gonna pause your time for a second. I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
Could you just clarify, when you say I sent an email to...
Um, the, Chris, stay...
The OPM.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Please continue.
And I'm not gonna go into depth about the negative effect this is gonna have on education, the storage issues, but I've already put that on the record. But you're redoing how teachers teach and the education they provide who have decades of experience. And there's no buy-in, mainly because there's been a complete lack of transparency, I hate to say. We had a faculty meeting here at Tollgate at the beginning of the year. It was, teacher hubs never mentioned, sharing classroom space never mentioned. None of it was mentioned. The only time that this has been put on the record is by myself and Ms. Necco. Other than that, it's really kind of flying under the radar. We've seen images of the football fields, images of the auditoriums. So I would like those layouts, I would also like you to consider some things with the implementation. Are teachers gonna be traveling from building to building? Are they gonna have a cart? If they're on a cart from building to building, I can see it right now, the papers are gonna be flowing in the wind, the textbooks and the English books are gonna get all wet in the rain. All costs, are there gonna be multiple floors? Because then that's gonna be an issue during passing time.
Thirty seconds.
And I have a couple other issues for us I'll save, but the main thing is, is the lack of classroom space and the lack of teacher space. You cannot have a school without classrooms. You cannot have a school without teachers and, and I hope we remember that and prioritize that going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Maduro, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reach out to Mr. Spiegel and I'm gonna send an email and copy you on it, so that way you can get those answers.
Hi, Darlene Necco, yeah. We, Jacob and I both have talked about the concern about the lack of classroom and space. I know people who went to visit, for example, East Providence High School, that's one of the complaints of the teachers there, no place for storage. I've mentioned before, we have a lot of books in the English department. Back in ninety-five, ninety-six, when I moved from Windman to Tollgate, when they moved the ninth grade out of Windman and into Tollgate, we did have to travel between Windman and Tollgate across the pathway. It snowed a hundred-five inches that winter, and it was quite challenging to go back and forth in the snow. I don't know if it was more challenging than going up and down those stairs this winter, but whatever. But what I wanted to really talk about was follow-up with the unfunded mandate issue because in addition to what we've already mentioned, you know, RIDE requires the green curriculum, which is garbage, in my opinion. People who weren't teachers put it together, they call it green. It doesn't mean that it's ecologically sound, it just means, green means go. And as someone who's taught for thirty-seven years, the product that I have is inferior to stuff I had thirty years ago. So in addition to unfunded mandates, though, we also have that little pesky problem that our city underfunded us fifteen years ago or so, five percent below the maintenance of effort, and never gave it back. And for a lengthy period of time, this district was operating under deficit. And to top it all off, in order to get the two thousand six bond money released, a previous school committee chair made a deal with a previous mayor for the school department to pay the interest on the bond. So that was about one point five million dollars in the budget for about ten years or so, right off the top, before anybody got anything else for the kids. One point five million went to pay for an interest. And as the late Mr. Eugene Nato used to point out at every meeting, only city in the country that did that. Just like Warwick was the only city or town in Rhode Island that took advantage of cutting the full five percent below maintenance of effort and never gave it back. that took advantage of cutting the full five percent below maintenance of effort and never gave it back. So whenever the city starts talking about the schools are spending too much money or the schools are wasting too much money, I want everybody to remember the fact that the schools were operating under a deficit for all of those years.
Thirty seconds.
And I think, I think Mr. Ferrucci once calculated about fifty-five million, um, in debt because of the maintenance of effort cut. And I myself calc- calculated probably ten million more because of the debt service. So that's like sixty-five million dollars we never got. And remember what Mr. McCaffrey said earlier about all of the programs and the way programs cost money? And, uh, let's not hear from the city and be lectured about the schools wasting money, because as I said earlier, we all need, everybody who cares about the schools needs to show up at that city hall on the nineteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Necco. Ms. Townsend?
Hi, everyone. First of all, ditto to everything Darlene said about the, about that budget issue. And God rest his soul, but Mr. Nato never forgot and never gave up on making that statement for all of us. Um, I guess, I'm, I'm here right now as the Volunteers of Warwick Schools Board of Directors Chair. And I want to also, it came, I was listening to Lisa talk about Patty and earlier, um, talking about Lynn. Um, both Patty and Lynn, I met them when they were teachers in elementary schools. And I've, I've followed them and watched them from the time they left to be principals and then director of... It was almost like Patty was following Lynn around, that was great. I know. But, but I, I, I want to thank both of you for your commitment to Vows. Lynn always, and as a board member. And Patty, when Patty came in, she carried on the torch that was left to Lynn by Bob Bushell to encourage all elementary school principals to take advantage of the opportunities and the programs that Vows offered. So, uh, you know, I, I miss Lynn already, and you know you'll be missed by us as well, Patty. So God bless and happy retirement. Thanks.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to comment? Any other members of the public wishing to comment? Ms. Rochelle, any? Nope, all set. Any other members of the public wishing to comment? All right. Ms. Cusino, I can't believe you're walking away from these meetings. Future meetings. The next school committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May twenty-seventh at five thirty PM. It will be here, it's a special meeting of the school committee. The next policy subcommittee, uh, subcommittee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June third, twenty twenty-five, at four thirty PM. The next building committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June fourth, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty AM. The next monthly school committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June tenth, six thirty PM. The fiscal subcommittee meeting is TBD. We have our new finance director coming in very shortly here that will now help us be able to get that up and going for the second half of the calendar year, as is the health and wellness subcommittee meeting that's TBD, and the WESAC meeting is TBD. Uh, there's a joint meeting, a special joint me- uh, meeting of the city council, school committee, and school department tomorrow night at five PM in city council chambers. Uh, we're, um, Acting Superintendent, uh, McCaffrey, uh, members of the administration, and a few members of the school committee are presenting to the city council and the general public, um, what makes up the school department's budget, what are the driving costs, um, and, and kind of getting a little bit more granular before, as Ms. Necco mentioned. Next Monday, uh, the nineteenth is the budget hearing, um, with the city council. Uh, there's all the departments, we're kind of in the middle of the agenda. Um, the, the meeting starts at four PM, so figure that, uh, the schools will likely be heard sometime, definitely after five PM, uh, hopefully not too late. And Tuesday is a if necessary date. So again, joint meeting of the school department, school committee, and city council tomorrow, five to seven PM city council chambers. Monday, budget hearing, and then, uh, two weeks, uh, from this week, on the twenty-seventh is our next school committee meeting. Being that there's no other, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Cusino, congratulations, well wishes to you. Thank you for everything you've done. Sorry for being a pain in your side for the last two years, five months.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Townsend?
Quick question, Patty, congratulations. We still keep Bruce, right, every month?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, be it that there's no other matters of business before this body, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Made by Mr. Testa and Ms. Hazelwood, seconded by Mr. Wiggins. All those in favor? Aye, anyone opposed? Motion carries for zero, we're adjourned at eight forty-one.